will now be recorded.
A good evening. We opened the Harwich Board's Selectmen's Meeting for February 1, 2021, at 5:45 this evening, and then went into open, into executive session with the intent upon leaving that of returning back to the open session. We discussed two articles. The first was pursuant to MGL 38 to consider purchase exchange or lease as value of real property if the carousel declares. And the second item, we discussed a strategy relating to pending litigation known as Watkins et al versus the town of Harwich. We discussed both those issues. They're ongoing and we'll have further discussions. With that, we return now to open meeting at approximately 6:32, I guess. And so, at this point, I'd ask invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And thank you, Joe. We have the flag in front of us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Next on the agenda is weekly briefing, and as usual, hello, Megan. Will I go to Joel to introduce it? And then we'll, I'm sure we'll move you, Megan.
Mr. Chairman, straight from you to our Public Health Director for her update.
Good evening, Larry and other board members. I have some good news. We have a lesser active caseload than we have in the last several weeks. Right now, we have 27 active cases in the town of Harwich. That's gone down from the low to mid 30s over the last several weeks. So we are heading in the right direction. We have a total of 481 cases of COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic almost a year ago now. We are still in the red. We are still a high-risk community. Our positivity rate is at 6.22, is lower than last week. We were in, I believe it was 7.5 last week. We are, again, trending in the right direction. And, and that goes for the entire Commonwealth as a whole. We're trending in the right direction, and we, we hope we continue those positive trends. And if all goes well this week, I believe we will be right on track for reopening into Phase Three of Step One of the reopening plans. So as of Monday, the 8th, as long as nothing major happens, I believe the governor will roll back his temporary measures in addition to the, the other measures that are already in place, which means, in general, those 25% occupancy restrictions should be lifted on Monday. And that goes through a whole lot of types of businesses, offices, restaurants, gyms, entertainment venues like movie theaters and things like that. So hopefully, a week from today, we'll be back at a 50% capacity rather than a 25% capacity. And that will hope, hopefully, assist some of the businesses that are struggling right now and get our, our, our workers back into offices that are currently working from home. Outside of that, I just wanted to give you a vaccine update. Barnstable County is really the vaccine depot for all local boards of health on Cape Cod. They represent 15 towns. The town of Sandwich is its own provider. They have, I'm not sure why they ended up being their own provider, but Barnstable County represents all the other towns. And as I mentioned last week, with the restrictions and the allocations that the Department of Public Health is putting on vaccine distribution, each provider is only getting a certain amount of COVID-19 vaccine. The county, as our provider, is getting Pfizer vaccine, which is the, the frozen vaccine that needs the deep freeze equipment in order to store it. They're able to, to secure 975 doses per week, and those will be going to regional clinics that they will set up on a weekly basis. They have a few sites that they will operate out of, and they're trying to rotate throughout the Cape, so they're able to get different areas of the Cape. They have the Fairgrounds, the Melody Tent, and they're working on securing one in the outer Cape, Lower Cape, Outer Cape area, possibly Orleans or Eastham. The, last week, they divided the 975 up into two different clinics, so they could serve two different clinic locations. The tough part about the vaccine is, once you take it out of the freezer and defrost it, it only has a few hours to, to really work with it. So once you, once you get it out of the freezer, you've got to have the, the appointments lined up, and you can't, once you puncture a vial, you can't put it back in the fridge. You've got to, you've got to use all that you open. So it's a pretty intense process for both the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines. And we learned, I learned today that it's not transportable. Once, once it's delivered, it's delivered frozen, both types, it needs to stay frozen until you're ready to use it. And it can't be transported once it's not in a frozen state. It's such a delicate mixture. It's a, it's a delicate vaccine. So doing mobile clinics or having a nurse go to do homebound or home visits with the vaccine right now is not possible because you can't, you can't shake this vaccine. You can't disturb it. It needs to be very stable. So they don't recommend traveling with it once it's in a liquid state. So that does change some of our hopes for doing homebound residents. At this point, it's not a possibility. They're, they're looking, possibly the, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine might be a possibility for, for doing something else that you can open a vial and, and move from house to house with it. With that said, the 975 a week on the Cape doesn't go very far. We have hundreds of thousands of residents all itching for the vaccine, and, and we understand that. We have other options that are also very slim on the Cape. We have CVS, Walgreens, and Stop &amp; Shop that are also providers. And if you go through the mass.gov website for the vaccine map, you can click on those locations and attempt to get an appointment. And if you're, if you're lucky, lucky that day, you can secure an appointment. I've been on a few times just to see what the process is like. And it's, it's very simple. It's like signing up for a newsletter at first. You just put your name and address in, and it searches for 50 miles around you for a vaccine. And if there's one, it shows you the, the date and time of, of it, and, and you can book it for an appointment. Lately, I've been on, and there's just, there's no vaccine within 50 miles of Harwich. There is vaccine available off Cape. And Cape Cod residents, any residents within Massachusetts are able to go to, there's three mass vaccination sites. You don't have to be a resident of the town that that, that clinic is in, the one at Gillette, and then there's one at Fenway, and there's one right outside of Boston. So if you are desperate for a vaccine right now, you are able to travel for it. I just want to remind people that being vaccinated doesn't make you able to not social distance or not wear a mask. It doesn't give you the green light to go visit family that you haven't seen in six months, nine months. It's a step towards that, but it's not, it's not a, a free-for-all once you've been vaccinated. So if we can wait another month, we believe we'll be able to get more than that 975 doses per week, and we'll be able to have larger clinics that people will have to get out of their houses to get to. And that's really unfortunate for, for some of our vulnerable populations. The state is working on a solution for that. Phase Two of the vaccine distribution plan started today. So all of the people in Phase One are eligible, and they remain eligible forever. And then Phase Two starts today, Phase Two Group One, and that is people who are 75 years or older. We'll, we'll be in this group for at least a week, probably two to three weeks before we open it up to the next group in Phase Two, which includes people that are 65 or older, or anyone that has two or more comorbidities. So we're moving along. It's very frustrating. The town of Harwich does not have a waitlist. The county does not have a waitlist. That's been a popular question on the, on the voicemail, is how do I get on a waitlist? The short answer is there is not a waitlist. But if you are lucky enough to get on the vaccine map and find a public clinic, if you get your name in there, and then while you're registering, it fills up during that two-minute time, which it, it does right now. Your information is stored. And should someone cancel, they'll call you, and you, you'll need to give them a phone number and email. So there is this somewhat waitlist, but it's not, it's not an actual waitlist. It's, you're put on a list if, for some reason, someone cancels, or they aren't actually qualifying for that group. So say someone age 65 signs up for a clinic next week, and as the, the coordinator of the clinic goes through the list, they, they see that they're not 75, and they reach out to them, and they, they're not in Phase One either. That person will get kicked off the list. You know, will open up a spot, and the computer system sees that someone had been trying to get a, a spot for that day. It, it's not an actual waitlist, and I'm not 100% sure on how it works, but sometimes you're able to be on a standby for that particular day. I think that's it for vaccine. We are working on a upgrade to the town of Harwich web, website. The COVID-19 resource page was just kind of a data dump. All, all of the data got put on that page, and it never really got cleaned up. So we're starting a new one, and it's got a button on the homepage, and we're populating it this week. Hopefully, hopefully making it easier to find what you're looking for with a list on the left side. So if you're just looking for testing sites, you can click on a link and so forth. The, the resource page that Channel 18 helped us with was just really a list of all the documents that we've put out. So I'm, I'm hoping that'll get populated and be an easy resource for people to find. And I'm happy to take questions.
Megan, just one, the, I assume that the pharmacy distribution is, is not included in the 975? They have their own distribution number?
That's right. Pharmacies are, they don't get their vaccine from the Department of Public Health. They get it straight from the CDC. So there, they get a different allotment, and it's not part of the 975. They seem to be having the same shortage problems that the local, the public clinics are. So if you, if you can find one at a Stop &amp; Shop or CVS, great, great. Get one wherever you can. But they're, they're not part of the 975.
Yeah, I looked this afternoon, the same response. Nothing within 50 miles. There you go. Other questions? Comments? I do appreciate you cleaning up the data site, because it was becoming, like the old expression, you can't dazzle with brilliance, be able to rest of that.
It was tough to find stuff.
Joel, I'll turn it back to you. Do I see Cindy's on?
So I'll use the segue of another, for another brilliant presentation, rather than baffling. We've got our Executive Director of Chamber of Commerce to follow up on the good news that Megan's offering on our numbers. So hopefully, Cindy, you've got at least positive or neutral news from the business community.
So tonight, actually, since everything's really status quo, I thought I would share some information about the annual Harwich magazine, because that actually does reflect all of the town, our businesses. And this year, it'll be a little bit different. The theme of it is Harwich life, live, work, play, and grow. And we're going to take everyone on a journey. You know, everyone's been through so much this past year, but we didn't want it to scream pandemic. But a lot of things have changed, how things, how people live, how they got here, and all that kind of fun stuff. So it'll be exciting. We're super excited about it. It is a little different than what we've done in the past. And I am going to share the cover. It's not going to be a great, it's not going to do it as justice, but we'll do a unveiling on social media. This was taken by a resident in Harwich Port. She was following us on social media, and I just loved her photography. So reached out, and the board voted, and you really can't see this, but this actually, for any of you that can tell, this is the campground, which we've never really shared with everybody. It's usually had water and all that kind of stuff. So this year, it's a little different, and it's really going to embody the life and what it's like to live here in this wonderful town. So that'll be, that was something exciting to share. Also, we're partnering this year, each chamber does their own guidebook or whatever, but the Cape Cod Chamber usually has had one. This year, they've changed, and they're doing a digital magazine, and there'll be video spotlights. So the Chamber, the Harwich Chamber has jumped on board because we really wanted to spotlight all that we offer here in town. So what this will do is, it will reach 1.7 million unique visit website viewers, 85,000 Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, and Twitter followers, as well as 38,000 email subscribers. So the world is going to know Harwich and all we offer. So there's some more exciting news. And then we've signed on, you know, we get so many leads through the town, through the state on grants, but we've also joined on a group that's called Grant Watch. And now I search under every rock possible that we can help any of the sectors that truly need the help through grants. So that'll be more, as we find something, I will, of course, present to all of you so you can hear. But just continue to support our restaurants and shops and all the local small businesses. We had a board meeting last week, and many of them were telling us how well they are doing. So it's great to hear the good news. I can't wait for February 8th, because I'm, fingers crossed, 50% will be great. And hopefully, we'll get to see some of our restaurants come back on board as well. Other than that, that's my good news for tonight.
Thank you, Cindy. Comments for Cindy? Questions? Thanks again, Cindy and Megan. Well, I, next is public comments. Is anyone wish to say, we, we have no one in queue for that, I think.
Correct. No one in queue for the public comments for later topics, perhaps, but not for that.
Okay. Next is the annual committee presentations. We have Housing, Harwich Housing Authority, and Art, I, I see your name up here.
So, Mr. Chairman, of the three committees, we received, I believe, material in your packet for the Housing Committee, for which Art can speak to.
All right.
I guess I'm on, then. I was looking at the, I was looking at the agenda, and I was number two, but I'll go first. That's okay. No problem there. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Art Bowden presenting the Harwich Housing Committee Annual Report for 2020. During the past year, the Housing Committee has focused on its mission to be an advocate for housing. We have supported a representative to the Community Preservation Committee by, for funding, supporting funding for affordable housing initiatives and the Rental Assistance Program administered by the Harwich Housing Authority. When called upon, the Housing Committee has offered voice and written comments supporting affordable housing projects. Earlier in the year, the Committee participated in a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust Committee to form a partnership for a more singular approach to solving housing issues. Additionally, the Chair supports the Affordable Housing Trust by attending meetings and adding input on agenda items and recommendations of direction that the Affordable Housing Trust should be pursuing. The Committee is committed to being a partner with the Housing, Affordable Housing Trust, continuing. The Housing Committee visited other towns this, this past year to witness firsthand the process of what other towns are achieving in building affordable housing. One of these projects is a recently furnished project in Hyannis sponsored by the Housing Assistance Corporation. It's called the Ridge Road Apartment Complex. It consisted of 16 one- and two-bedroom apartments, and it illustrated what a project, demonstrated what can be done on a small parcel of land and with a design that complemented the area. The Committee has maintained its representation on the County Home Consortium Advisory Council, participating in their monthly meetings, and playing a role in determining the allocation of housing funds to the Housing Home Program Ministers. The Committee also supports the Real Estate and Open Space Committee by attending their meetings and advocating for housing. The Real Estate and Open Space Committee plays a pivotal role in determination of the use of land that becomes available to the town. Therefore, it is essential to have housing in the room when the determination for land use is being discussed. During 2020, Habitat for Humanity started work on six homes on Murray Lane in West Harwich. We are thankful that Habitat is back in Harwich, building owner-occupied homes. It is important that we support this great organization now and in the future. In closing, I want to thank the Town Administrator, Joe Powers, and the Board of Selectmen for their support of housing initiatives, and the Town Planner, Charlene Greenhall, for her support in all requests made to her. Respectfully, Arthur Bowden, Chair, Housing Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Don? Yeah, thanks. Art and I are in pretty frequent contact with each other, have been over the past year. We can look forward in the next few weeks to having another joint meeting, Art, the Housing Committee. And I want to assure people, even when they're not seeing what's going on, that I've had conversations with CDP relative to Andrea and Palinda being made available on time. We're not utilizing them to the fullest, and the role of the Housing Committee is somewhat different from the Affordable Housing Trust. I really am relying on them, especially when COVID is over, to be more, the outreach in terms of discussing why affordable housing is important. I know we on the board have discussed this, and I know you and I have, Art, that it's not, the trust itself can transcend affordable with a capital A in some projects where it can build low-end market-rate housing in conjunction with affordable housing, as long as it meets the other guidelines. So I know, I know we've had discussions like that, and I'd like to be able to make sure that we continue to, with you folks doing the community outreach and the trust building on properties. So we, so far, the, the only project I can discuss publicly is the one in, on Sisson Road, but you've been there for pretty much every discussion we've had, and that's moving along.
Don and Art, does outreach mean that if I call one, not, not only about buying housing, but I'm in trouble, I need rental assistance, guidance, or direction, and who to contact, that type of outreach as well?
I would have to refer that to the Housing Authority. And if there's, you know, a rental assistance questions, they're the ones that generally field those questions.
Or just help out what might be available, you know, sort of.
Andrea's probably more helpful with that, because they do have a contact mechanism through Facebook and through the town's website. And frankly, while we don't ourselves do that, HAC is the conduit for the state's contract award for the Community Development Block Grant that was given to Cape Cod through the Commission. They are doing rental assistance. HESCH does some rental assistance, CDP does, Lower Cape Outreach Council does, but if people are, yes. If people are in need, especially now, we certainly don't want them falling through the cracks, but we're trying to focus. I don't think Art's been doing anything referrals, and the trust itself is focusing on actually building properties where people can walk in and have a ceiling over their head. So recognizing there are other aspects of housing problems, Andrea could direct them to people that are actively engaged in that.
Yeah, they pursue that a bit, because you're, Don, I think your last comment was what I was looking for, was there somewhere in town, a person could call, and, and that, and the town official would, whether it's Palinda, possibly, direct them to the right person to talk to. So they're just now pondering about how to get information.
They can. And again, it's on the website. The, the bigger issue is, in the longer term, I'd love to have it inside Town Hall. I think we've all discussed that tangentially, and that's probably the, the destination point, so that there's really an anchor, so that people can know that there's somebody in Town Hall. But it doesn't help when Town Hall's not open, and we're under contract for that kind of assistance to the trust. Ultimately, the real solution is that there's somebody tasked with that in Town Hall.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? Not, well, thank you, Art.
Well, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, this allows me to apologize for my mistake for Tracy. Tracy, I apologize, I didn't see you there. So we also have Tracy Cannon to present on behalf of the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Hi. Hi, nice to meet you all. I'm, I'm the new director at the Chatham Housing Authority, and I just wanted to follow up on what was being said about the housing, the rental assistance. We, of course, have the rental assistance that we were given by the town, so that, we have that. I'm happy to field any calls from anybody at any time. I, you know, we, a lot of people call us anyway, because we have the name Authority in our title. So they do believe that we know, you know, where they should go and what they could do if they needed help. Currently, we do have the help in, in that we have the rental assistance, which my colleague is currently going through our applications and processing all of them, and trying to get some people help as quick as possible. And then I also, very often, Andrea is a great contact. I also send people up to homeless prevention, because they're, they're a very good, a very good resource for people in need of either assistance and/or housing in general. They're, they're just a really good, they're all, we have a lot of good resources, I have to say. So, that being said, I have to apologize, because I realized as I was leaving my office today, that I had an annual report of the Harwich Housing Authority to, to give to you guys. And I, I probably should have, I was supposed to, I'm supposed to email it to all of you. So I'm happy to read it to you, if that's okay. And, and then if you have any questions regarding it, I mean, it is technically from our board, unless Elizabeth, you don't want to read it, do you? Do you care? You don't care? No, she does not. Okay, so I will. Is it okay?
Yeah, I think you can read it and then email to us.
I happily do that. I'm so sorry. I realized as I was leaving the office today, I went, oh, no, I was supposed to send it. So, um, to the Honorable Board of Selectmen and the citizens of the town of Harwich. The Office of the Harwich Housing Authority shares space with the Chatham Housing Authority and is located at 240 Kroll Road in Chatham. The office is open five days a week, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, except for Fridays when we close at 3:30. Our physical office is currently closed to the general public for in-person appointments due to COVID-19. due to COVID-19. We will schedule appointments with our tenants when necessary. Our board consists of five members. We currently have one vacancy. The mission of the Harwich Housing Authority is to provide affordable, decent, safe, and sanitary housing through the maintenance of our existing units and the development of new units, to create an environment which enables residents to live responsibly and with dignity, to support residents in their effort to achieve self-sufficiency, to honor public commitments in a fiscally and ethically responsible manner, to create and maintain public confidence in the authority's operations and staff, to ensure that the facilities owned and managed by the Harwich Housing Authority are marketable to the community and are appealing to residents, to enable the Harwich Housing Authority's staff to improve their performance through appropriate vision, training, and career development, and to establish performance goals that meet or exceed industry standards and that optimize the use of available resources to achieve our performance objectives, and to assist the town, state, and national governments in identifying and addressing housing needs. Eligibility for housing subsidized through the Harwich Housing Authority is governed by rules and regulations promulgated by the Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The Harwich Housing Authority operates a total of forty-one units of state subsidized housing under three different government subsidy programs. State programs include the Massachusetts Rental Voucher Program, which currently has twenty-one scattered site family and elderly vouchers. These voucher amounts are based on income and pay for any portion of rent that exceeds thirty to forty percent of household income. The state has revamped the program, opening it up to a wider income base for eligibility. Other programs include the Massachusetts 705 Family Housing Program, which consists of twelve family units, two two-bedroom units, and ten three-bedroom units, one which is wheelchair accessible. The rent for these apartments is based on twenty-seven percent of household income after deductions. And finally, we have the Massachusetts 167 Program through the Department of Mental Health, which has a total of eight special needs units in a single building, which is currently leased to Vinfin. The projects being funded with Community Preservation Act funds approved by Harwich Town Meetings consist of the Rental Assistance Program, which is still going strong. We requested $150,000 in additional funds from the CPC to continue the program and have just received $200,000. CADA has begun the process of updating our waiting list and preparing to accept our newest group of recipients. With these funds, we'll be able to assist a minimum of eighteen households. We have assisted over a hundred households since the program started. Under this program, we offer assistance to qualified families by paying a portion of their rent each month not to exceed $350 for a maximum of three years. We recertify them once a year and adjust their voucher accordingly. This program is designed to help people as they work towards becoming self-sufficient. We continue to contract with the Chatham Housing Authority for management of the HHA. Tracy Cannon and Kada Kaler Rice handle the daily activities of the Harwich Housing Authority. Dave Trossi is our maintenance mechanic and works a part-time schedule with the Harwich Housing Authority. We thank them for their service. The Harwich Housing Authority wishes to express its gratitude and thanks to the town and citizens of Harwich for a successful 2020 and looks forward to a productive 2021. We welcome and encourage your support and suggestions in our efforts to continue to provide quality housing for residents of Harwich. Respectfully submitted, the board. So that's our, that's our annual blurb. Primarily right now, what's going on, the, I mean, the most important thing right now is, of course, they are getting the housing assistance out. That is what we're working on most right now. We have, our twelve units are full. We rarely get vacancies. The families are very happy where they are, and, and they all seem to be doing well. We did just, just begin doing a kind of a, I don't know, we're trying to neaten up some of the properties. So I've, I allocated some funds to get landscapers over to Long Pond to get, get things cleaned up a little bit over there and, but all in all, I think they're in pretty good shape. The properties seem to be in, in, in pretty good shape. So, and the, and our group home is going strong, so. That's the reward.
Questions or comments for Tracy? Don?
Yeah, I just want to take note of Elizabeth Harder sitting over there in one of the Hollywood Squares. I know she's too shy and self-effacing to talk about anything, but.
She's been unusually quiet.
In deference to Art, I, I don't know that there's a more ardent and passionate advocate for affordable housing, Elizabeth.
I'm, I'm just here to support Ms. Tracy tonight. But yes, you know, housing, more housing. We need more housing. Please, thank you.
I believe I've heard that before from you.
Thanks again, Tracy.
Oh, you're welcome, Larry.
We'll move on.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I'm not sure. We, we didn't get a report, so we can follow up on, on that and have them come back.
Okay. Let's move on then to public hearings, and we have a presentation on the possible reuse of Bank Street Fire Station.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In a moment, you'll hear from Jeff Locantore. Jeff and John O'Callahan have been meeting with me, well, virtually, of course, but regularly. They have a proposal that Jeff would like to present this evening regarding the reuse of the property at 203 Bank Street. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I would just turn it over to Mr. Locantore for his presentation.
Is he on the, on our call?
So Jeff, if you're on, you have to unmute either star six or hit the space bar or the microphone icon.
Can everybody hear me?
We can, Jeff.
Good evening, members of the board and Joe Powers. Thank you for inviting me tonight to talk about the reuse of 203 Bank Street, the former original fire station and harbor master's building. My friend Jonathan O'Callahan and I have, are in the process actually of forming a 501(c)(3) with a local lawyering firm. It would be called Adult Shared Living Harwich Incorporated. And the mission statement of that is to obtain housing for adults twenty-two years and older with, with disabled in any way to live independently, who would not be able to afford a place of their own on Cape Cod. They also would like to live in a shared house with adults their own age and share the same or similar interests. And I'm going to just give you a brief update on myself and Jonathan, as Jonathan was, is working tonight, so he's not able to be on the call. I'm thirty-five years old with CP and two different types of seizures. I lived in Harwich since nineteen ninety, and I know a few Board of Selectmen, Mike McCaskill, Don Howell. I graduated from Cape Cod Tech in two thousand and four with a diploma and a business certificate from the Business Management Program. I was on the Honor Society in high school in my junior and senior year. And since graduation in two thousand and four, I have volunteered in town in many departments. You can ask Harwich Fire Department, I've done their photograph. I've worked with the retired Barbara, COA Director Barbara Ann Foley. I've helped Susan Giselle when she's needed things done. I've helped all different departments. And I want to be able to do some affordable housing for disabled adults in town. Jonathan O'Callahan, my, the other co-founder, is a thirty-six-year-old with cognitive and physical disabilities. He moved to Harwich permanently in two thousand seventeen, but summered here with his parents and grandparents since a young child. Jonathan is a two thousand graduate, two thousand and three graduate from Whitman-Hanson High Regional High School with a high school diploma. Jonathan works for Windsor Skilled Care Nursing and Rehab in South Yarmouth as a dietary aide, and in the summer for Cranberry Valley Golf Course in Harwich. Jonathan likes to golf, kayak, garden, and work on nonprofit projects such as housing for disabled and the Cranberry Festival Committee as a volunteer to help with the community of Harwich. We're hoping you consider allowing adult shared living Harwich the ability to use the old fire station property as a place to put a prefab house with a total of four bedrooms and possibly four and a half bathrooms. And this project would be completed in phases. You know, we are, we're looking for support from the Board of Selectmen. I also have a small committee put together. I've got a treasurer, a secretary, two to three board members. I've got a photographer. I've got a advertising person. And that advertising person, once we are established as a nonprofit, can get me press time with Cape Cod Times, and I have a connection with Cape Cod Chronicle, so we'll be able to get in there. My reason for doing this is I like to be in with adults, with adults my own age. I live at Pine Oaks Village in Harwich as of right now, and the reason I want to do this is so I'm in with adults. I've worked diligently with Joe by phone because of COVID, of course, and Joe has been a great supporter, and he's helped us with a lot of information. I've also worked in the past with Art Bowden, and I believe Art's on the call tonight. And I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen and Joe Powers for their support, and I would like to ask if the board has any questions, comments, or concerns for me at this point.
Joel, could you follow up on, I'm sure you've had discussions on process, you know, all the issues that surround this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Jeff and I have talked on a regular basis. This started out when Jeff reached out to me soon after I presented to the board back in November of two thousand and twenty about the disposition of the Bank Street property, the 203 Bank Street, the former harbor master or former fire station, however you want to refer it. And Jeff reached out and asked if there was a possibility to, to reuse the property for a different use. So as we've discussed, I mentioned to Jeff that there are currently town meeting votes in place, and some of what he is suggesting would require secondary actions by the town, either through the board or through town meeting. So we agreed that he would put his presentation together and present to you all tonight to get some, if you have questions or comments, or perhaps he has questions and comments that the board can answer as well.
Thank you, Joel. Look to the rest of the board. Comments? I guess I'll start with you, Michael. Questions, comments?
Thanks, Larry. Great job, Jeff. And, and I know that you've been at this for a lot longer than, since 2020, when we talked about the disposition, I believe, this idea, I think you had this idea years and years ago, didn't you?
Michael, this, this has been going since you and I have known each other for ten, fifteen years, pal. This has been going on for a long time, this idea of mine.
Well, great, great job, Jeff. I, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the level of communication and, and the level of detail that you've supplied me at least on the fundraising efforts and, and what your plan is and how you're going to make it work. I guess the, the one question for the Town Administrator would be, where are we at with the RFP process on Bank Street? I know that we had talked about putting an RFP out to gauge interest.
So the RFP was in preparation. I can tell you that as of today, we received information through the Engineering Department that may put a crimp on the RFP. I truly don't know yet that's relative to condition of the property that came to light. It has to do with a potential additional wetland designation, and so it's something that I need to work with the town engineer and other parties to, to vet. I don't think it's going to take a long time, but I truly don't know what impact, if any, that information will have on the process.
Okay. And, and I guess without speculating, this property is, is a fairly large property, and we, we have talked, you know, CPC's got requests in right now from Harwich Conservation Trust for parking in the rear of this property for trails and, and also making ADA trails out there. So I know that that has to be looked at, right? The town spending money on these trails and the, and the bug mitigation, and, and I would say we have to provide some sort of parking. But if I'm correct, this property would be big enough, because when we discussed this in pre-town meeting, it was at least said that three homes could be put on this property instead of the firehouse. Is that still what we're thinking, Joe, or is this new hitch going to subtract from that?
Well, I don't, I don't, I truly don't know the effect of the, the latest development, if you pardon the phrase. And I, and I know that there has been discussion before, but the records that I've found, there were preliminary drawings regarding development, but nothing that was formally provided. So I know that it has to be vetted internally if we want to go that route. What I can say is that we know that it's a parcel altogether that's just over two acres. And so what we're trying to figure out is the fire station building itself is within a hundred-foot buffer zone of a wetland. That's the existing wetland that we're aware of, and so that would impact if we were to demolish the building potentially. So now we're trying to find out what effect, if any, that other potential wetland would have if there's an additional buffer on that one. So we know there's two acres of, of land potentially in play, but we, we really don't know yet what this wetland could do to the, to the proposal. It certainly won't do anything to stop the demolition of the building. However, in, in talking with Mr. Locantore for the last few months, he, he has indicated that perhaps there might be a reuse of the building. And so for that reason, I wanted to have the presentation and discussion tonight because before we tear the building down, didn't know if there was any desire to keep the building or if I should continue forward on the demolition itself.
So absent, absent the other interested people, Joe, because I do know that there's been inquiries made at, at least on this board member's behalf, there, there's been, the Fire Association for, for, was one of them, and they, they considered possibly redoing it, cutting off the wing of it, and making the original firehouse similar to what we did with South Howard's Meeting House. And I, and I would say, based on, on Jeff's proposal, I don't think that that would prohibit us from allowing something else to happen there. But I think before we tear down the building, we certainly should have do a little more due diligence on who may want that, that building. Absent a decision on this and, and direction that we're going to go, I think Jeff has, has put himself out there. I think he has a great plan. I think it's a great idea, and it would be a great statement for the town of Harwich to jump in on this.
Michael, I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
If, if this plan was to go. If, if this plan was to go into play, does this increase with the disa- putting the disabled adults in this um unit? Does that increase the amount of affordable housing there is in town?
Absolutely. Um, and, and then just, just to further where I was going with that was um, we have a housing, we have a housing trust and, and Don Howell is uh the chairman of that housing trust. Some land was given to the housing, housing trust at town meeting. And I, I think it would certainly be something that maybe the housing trust takes up and, and possibly we do it on uh one of those pieces of land if, if it's possible. I know the town, town Harwich owns a lot of land, so maybe we go back to uh town meeting and, and pick another piece of land. And I've always said that we should be doing something quite different with the Albro House next to Town Hall. And I, and I used to, two years ago, propose veterans housing in there. And right now we have one office, one town office in there. Uh, and then I believe we rent some space to a private party. But it seems to me that we're paying an awful lot of expense for that building to have one person. So I would also advocate um for the Albro House if we can't find another piece of land. But Jeff, uh, just so everybody's clear, I a hundred percent support what you're doing. I'm not a hundred percent sure on the Bank Street Firehouse right now, but I thank you for your presentation and I, and I look forward to more.
Thank you, Michael. Ed, do you have a uh comment? Uh, Steve, Ed may be muted.
Yeah, yeah, great, great presentation, Jeff. Uh, it certainly is a need. Uh, I agree with Michael and um if there's a way either through this property or through other properties, I think it's something we should definitely consider. Uh, so uh we want to stay in close touch with you, with Joe, as the, as the project develops.
Thank you very much. Uh, Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mike, Michael's right and Jeff's right. As a matter of fact, uh, Jeff and I were talking about this uh nowhere near as long as what Michael was, but about four, five years ago, I think it was. I commend his, uh, following his dream because this is something that's an unmet need. Uh, I'll echo everything Michael said. I mean, there's a, there's a lot to unpack and I'm not sure whether this particular property uh is the be-all and end-all for that, but uh it's a commendable goal and it's something we should be looking into doing. So everything else Michael said, I back up. And thanks, Jeff, for coming.
I agree, thanks, Jeff. Good, good presentation. I think it's been inferred, there's uh some steps to go through. There's uh some competition for that property that we'll have to sort out to process to make it happen, but it's certainly a, uh, we, we need to do something.
You know, you, so there are other properties out there that could work better than uh two oh three Bank.
There is, but I think we'll pursue this discussion and we'll see where, where it goes as well. Uh, Joe, any final thoughts? If uh not, we'll move on.
No, that was all I had. Um, you know, like I said, Jeff has been um very passionate about this and we, we meet regularly. So um I think I have um plenty of information tonight to take my next steps. Uh, Jeff, I know that you and I talked today and we will pick up the discussion again later if that's what you'd like to do.
Before I leave this, before we leave this subject, is there anyone else on the video conference that would like to uh chime in? Thanks again, Jeff.
Thank you.
Uh, moving next to the consent agenda, uh, Michael, you want to take this?
Yes, I move that we approve the Caleb Chest, uh Caleb Chase fund request in the amount of one thousand dollars.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll take a vote, Don.
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So moving to uh new business?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm going to work down through these if, if, if you'll allow me.
Yes.
Prior to, prior to that, I just want to ask the question that I've been asking um for each one of these votes come up on liquor licenses or entertainment. Are any of these subject to hearings or uh anything that would, would warrant us not voting for them tonight?
So um the only one that stands out is item number six, Amber Pizza. Um, there is a pending matter and um I am hopeful to uh finalize my um report on that tomorrow and to work with the chair on the hearing coming before the board. Otherwise, I'm not aware of any other establishments having any prior issues uh with uh these or other licenses.
And then the uh follow-up question, I guess, would be then, is there, is there a, um, is there any reason to vote this tonight or do we bring it back after you finalize that?
It's, it's my understanding that the board um could renew tonight uh because you, um, you have a separate matter. Uh, you're the licensing ma- authority on that other matter. You could take any action at that point in time. So if you did approve tonight, there would be no harm in the future, according to council. Uh, and if you held off, there would be no harm rendered because of a future action, a future discussion in the hearing.
And I guess, Joe, the only other question is, on these licenses, is there any changes to the hours requested for entertainment or these renewals from last year?
Uh, it's my understanding that these were the requests, uh, these mirror requests from last year.
Um, I think I'll read these individually and
Michael, may I ask, I'd like to ask one question. Because y'all were looking to be consistent and that's good. My question is, uh, the uh amplification of the music. That's, that's been a concern is, is that something we need to consider as we move more outside entertainment?
Well, you want my opinion?
I want everyone's opinion. I'm throwing it out because as we, you know, we know from this past year, when we moved more music outside, it caused uh more difficulties now. So I'm just raising it.
I, I, I personally, and, and I am the liaison to the Noise Containment Committee. Um, they have some recommendations and, and they are, they are at a standstill on uh definition of audible, audible noise and the hundred and fifty foot mark. Um, and, and I look at this a little bit differently than, than, than uh, than the minority of the committee, I guess I would say. Because it was, it was voted and the minority of the committee still holds strong that we need to better clarify audible, audible noise. And it can't be, uh, it can't be a lyrics test is, is basically what the minority of the committee's saying. I, I do think that we owe uh the public and, and the Noise Containment Committee that spent, you know, uh, a year of their lives working on this um, some answers and we haven't voted an action plan yet. So when it came before the board, we talked about a much swifter action and, and uh much swifter punishments. Um, so it, you know, in voting these tonight, Larry, it, it would be at least my statement that this comes back uh to the board and we discuss what that action plan's going to be. And prior to these businesses opening with their entertainment, they made very well aware of what our new policies and procedures are going to be um, so that they can have some comfort that we're going to act on it and we're going to act fast on it. And I know COVID played a big part this year in, in not having hearings fast enough um, and us being very open to outdoor entertainment uh because of COVID. We're going to have COVID again this summer and I'm still going to be tasked with letting people operate outside more. So uh there was a good portion of the public that wanted to see some changes and we have not uh discussed that and we still need to discuss that.
Yeah, we'll bring that back as soon as you, uh, your committee comes back with that, yeah. Don, you have any comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. One specific one and, and I'm going to ask Michael for something uh to be contained in his motion, but the Harwich Innen Tavern on the Sunday, was that, is that still the same in this request, the twelve AM Sunday, uh, beginning at one PM?
I'd have to do more research on that. I don't have it directly in front of me.
Well, just in general, Mr. Chair, what I was hoping Michael would do in his motion is also include some language in there about and other such terms and conditions as have been previously associated with these licenses, so that we don't lose anything.
I see your points. That, that kind of goes back to Michael's, your suggestion that we can follow up on these discussions when we have the policy in place, so. Right? Are you willing to, to modify your motion, Michael?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, with that, I'm going to move that we approve Harwich Innen Tavern, seventy-seven Route twenty-eight, weekday, twelve PM to twelve AM inside and four PM to eight PM outside. Sunday, one PM to twelve AM inside with any other terms and conditions previously assigned.
Second.
Any other discussion? I'll take a roll call. I'll start with an aye, Michael.
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mr. Ball?
Okay, I move that we approve Jake Rooney's one-one-nine Brooks Road, weekday, five PM to twelve PM inside and five PM to ten PM outside. Sunday, five PM to nine PM inside. Uh, enter, entertainment license with any terms and conditions previously assigned.
Second.
If no discussion, I'll take a roll call. Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Okay, I move that we approve the two thousand twenty-one entertainment license for four hundred East fourteen twenty-one Orleans Road, weekday, five PM to twelve AM inside with any other terms and conditions assigned.
Second.
Second. Uh, I'll go as roll call again. Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Voted?
Okay, I move that we approve the two thousand twenty-one entertainment license for Cape Seagrill, thirty-one C Street, weekday, eleven AM to twelve AM inside with any previous conditions assigned.
Second.
Discussion done. I'll uh take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
All right, I move that we approve the two thousand twenty-one entertainment license for the Lanyard, four twenty-nine Main Street, weekdays, twelve PM to twelve AM inside. Sunday, one PM to nine PM inside and outside with any other previous conditions assigned.
Second.
No discussion. I'll take a roll call. Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
Um, I'm going to look to another board member to make a positive motion on the next one. I, I, I struggle with this. It, it, um, we clearly can't do anything right in the, in the applicant's eyes and um we've been waiting for hearings for quite some time. And as I read in the paper last week, we did that wrong again. I um, I, I can't make a positive motion on this, not at this time.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, to an earlier question. Uh, you'll see in the memo from staff uh what they're requesting this year, comparison to what they had last year. And uh you'll see that the weekday is an expansion. Uh, they're looking to go from six PM uh, um, uh, outside, excuse me. They had six PM to ten PM outside. They're looking to go ten AM to ten PM outside.
And Joe, you're uh, you're scheduled to hear you now when?
So the hearing has been completed. I'm finalizing the report with counsel. The only thing that's holding me up right now is making sure I secure notice to the, uh, to the attorney uh prior to setting the time um with you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's see, I, I'd be more comfortable delaying this until we handle the hearing for our side.
Yeah, I, I would agree, Larry. This is Steve Ward.
If there's no positive motion, then, uh, Joe, let's bring this back when we, uh, after we've had a chance to assess the hearing results.
So noted, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda is your old business, Joe. I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the first time, if you will, that this uh item comes up under old business in the manner in which you see it on the agenda. Uh, and the reason why there's no packet material is there's really uh nothing of um significant substance this evening. Uh, all I really have is just some updates for the board and the general public uh with an expectation that we'll have uh actual topics and materials provided uh on your meeting on February eighth. Um, so my update at this point, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, is uh we will have um, and I'm probably saying the last name wrong, I apologize in advance, but um uh George Huelfelder from the Mass Alternative Septic System Test Center will be on your agenda on uh Monday, February eighth to discuss uh innovative uh alternatives, in other words, IA technology. Um, as some of you may already be aware, there was a presentation uh on Thursday of last week, the twenty-eighth of January, um, to the Pleasant Bay Watershed Work Group. And that was by Ed Eichner and Brian Howes and they're talking about uh the updates on the nitrogen removal, uh, tracking and accounting on that. Um, I had a chance to sit in on the first hour and a half of that. Um, very in-depth, very technical, um, but even I could keep up. Uh, we don't have the presentation material yet, Mr. Chairman, but once we have that, I'll share that with the board and the general public. Um, as, um, as you and Selectman Howell may recall, the next meeting of the DHY Working Group is uh set for this Friday at nine AM for February fifth. Um, I have uh reached out to Yarmouth. I updated that, uh, the town of Yarmouth about the board's vote uh relative to uh where we're at with the DHY agreement. And I'm reaching out to my counterpart and Dennis uh later this week for the same purpose um to uh, to have those side conversations with them as well. And so as I mentioned, this is the first time that we have the topic on the agenda in the manner you see. And uh, starting on the week of February eighth, we should have substantive matters coming before the board.
Uh, Joe, if I can add to, to that, in addition to George, uh, Brian Dudley from uh Mass DEP will join us on, on the uh eighth, which will give us, I hope, a good discussion on both IA performance and then IA uh regulatory issues. They're scheduled to uh start at the eight. Uh, Joe, to add further to that, I would ask uh any of my fellow board members if they uh specific questions, if you can email those in to help Brian and George prepare. And anyone in the audience watching, or we can, Joe, get that word out, uh, can send that also to you and uh we'll pass those on so to have that coming into the meeting.
Thank, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I didn't have, did you say that that discussion will be at eight PM?
Eight, yes.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say it in this form because I think it's important, uh, rather than saying it after the fact. I just, uh, just want to confirm, the vote we took for DHY was to allow it to be placed on the warrant, but we did not in any way, shape, or form endorse uh, uh, what was going on. So that when we report on Friday, I don't want to get in front of ourselves here. All, all we did was say that we're willing to put it on the warrant at the moment.
I, uh, I think and I hope that was clear, but that, uh, that should help. Okay, Joe, any other comments?
No, other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'd move right on to uh my administrator's report.
Okay.
Um, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Andy? Sure, please.
Yeah, you should have received my email. Um, just as a side note, on the link for the email for public comment, uh, the blue highlighted area includes the word uh two, T O with a space. And for anyone watching, um, that's not the proper email. If you actually type it out, you have to leave that off. When you click the link, the link works properly. I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you.
And then uh, just as a, a thought on the DHY, it seems like we're not going to get into it too much. Um, but I've been thinking about it a lot uh since our last meeting. And I um, I wanted to I wanted to phrase the phrase it as a question to conceptualize the 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 whole scope of the project. And in this way, if CDM Smith or an engineer had come to you and said, you know, phases two and three, we're going to sewer over 145 homes that will not improve the bay, Pleasant Bay. Our cost estimates might be accurate, but they could be 30% higher. It could be 50% higher, it could be 60% higher. We're not quite sure. And we didn't really take land use seriously. We haven't really dug down into some of the alternatives. But please set that aside. Let's get phase four, five, six and seven, and we really should go ahead with those. I would ask, you know, hypothetically, you know, what would your response to be to an engineering firm be? And my point is, again, I I'm just restating that I feel strongly that we need to take a close look at the foundation of the project because it does affect the other phases. If we didn't have confidence in the first phase two and phase three, I think phase one was great, by the way, the Muddy Creek Project. I'd like to say that. But the other aspects of the the early phases, you know, it it does tie into the kind of the future. And so I just wanted to throw that out there as a hypothetical question, discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. We'll move on then, Joe, to your town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few quick items. First, it's that time of of year, every other year where we received notice from the Division of State Ethics. So we have to do our conflict of interest law information and receipts. So I will be working with staff. We have information that we'll send out to the board tomorrow. And that will be distributing to staff on both the receipt and the online training program. Secondly, I know that there was a question.
Joe, before you leave that subject, that would be the that would be processed where we can do the ethics requirement online.
Correct. Well, there's a form that has to be signed by the board, so we'll circulate that for signatures. And then separately, we'll get you the links on the online training that ends in a certificate that has to be submitted for the record. So we'll work with the board on that. And you you will have seen in your packet that we received notice last week from Cape Cod Commission about the DLTA or District Local Technical Assistance Funds. And when I got that last week, I set up a meeting with staff. So I've got community development, engineering and other departments meeting with me tomorrow to review that, to see what opportunities we think we can take relative to the DLTA grant program for calendar year 22. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you, Joe. We'll go then to selectmen's reports. Steve, I'll start with you.
Yeah, Larry or Joe, did the other selectmen got copies of the presentation that was given to the subcommittee on, it was really on elementary school pricing, but or costs. But there was also a presentation by the school administration, Scott and and his assistant relative to what the budget looks like for the upcoming year and how the proposed alternate assessment method might work. Was any of that material, Joe, sent around to all the selectmen?
It hasn't been yet. I'm working with Carol. There's a slight change in the assessment number. So we had that confirmed today, but I will be redistributing that. And thank you for that because, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to announce the joint meeting that has been established for both town of Harwich, town of Chatham and the Montomoy Regional School Committee based on what Selectman Ford was just referencing.
Yeah, go ahead. I just saw that notice today.
So if I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Joe. I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you, Selectman Ford. So the material that Selectman Ford was referencing was discussed at the subgroup that's working on the Montomoy question of parity, as you heard Dr. Carpenter say earlier, parity or equity in the elementary schools and also parity and equity as much as possible in the funding and the assessments. So the sub-working group has established a a meeting of the three entities, meaning this Board of Selectmen, the Chatham Select Board and the Montomoy Regional School Committee. And that has been set for Wednesday, February 10th at 6:30 PM. So more information will be coming out through the school committee. But we are looking to have the three bodies appear in that joint meeting on Wednesday, February 10th at 6:30. And that's really to get deeper into the question of the alternative assessment that Selectman Ford just referenced, which is the the current issue that's vexing the district and quite frankly, us as well.
Yeah, and and the Larry, and the sooner that we can get that around, I think it's very important so that each of the selectmen have a chance to take a closer look. I I must say that even with the alternative assessment method, it doesn't come into effect as quickly as we would like. And I'm sure that my colleagues on the board will have some comments relative to that. It is a good process and it is a good alternative. But it doesn't happen, I think, as fast as it as we would hope it would. The secondary thing is that the the school, the school budget, the way they showed it to us in this presentation shows the state has come through with numbers that are going to create a pretty pretty significant bump in the cost to the town of Harwich, especially if the alternative assessment doesn't go into effect until the fall. So I think this is something we're all going to be very keenly focused on. And we should try to get a chance to address it, you know, by reading through it ourselves prior to this meeting, which I think would be very important.
Agreed. And I, Joe, go ahead.
I know, just to to follow on that, just as a reminder, I will be presenting, excuse me, I will be transmitting is really the better way to say it. My comprehensive budget report as required Monday evening on the on the 8th, which incorporates the the money that Selectman Ford just referenced. And so I say I say transmitting because that's me conveying it to you. And then we can have a deeper dive on it before you then make any changes or recommendations before it goes on to finance committee later in the month. So much more significant information to be coming up next week.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're seeing this. I think my concern, probably all our concern is, I still and this has been in the papers, so I, you know, regardless what's come out yet, is that this, the change in the assessment process, my mind is still a long term solution. And what I love our discussion has to be on what is the short term, what happens next year. So that I think we'll have to explore more. But thank you, Steve, for participating in that. Ed?
Your bet.
No. I'm fine.
Don?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Michael?
I'm good.
As am I. So I guess we'll, I'm disappointed there's no snow here tonight, but I guess we've we'll have to live without it.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. A good night, folks.
Have a good night, everybody.